All right. Call the media order, Ms. Chee, call the room, please.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Dietz and Mr. Bodesko are absent.
All righty, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. All right, we've adopted the agenda. We have no speaker today, which is okay, because we've had a few and they've been good. And receipt of petitions. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak? I don't know if we're getting a presentation on this new business item or not, but anyway, I'm gonna assume the two public do not have comments at this time. No old business, new business, right to it. I gather we have a public hearing in action on a vacation of public right-of-way. Mr. Fuller, what do you got?
Uh, this is...
I think it's just automatic.
Automatic, okay.
Hands-free.
So, this is a mandatory recommendation to city council by the planning commission. This is for, to vacate a public street right-of-way, and this is on Oakhaven and Drive, and the adjacent lot 10, the Oakhaven subdivision, which is 608 Oakhaven. There's a contract owner, and the developer wants to buy this 1,609 square feet to add it to the lot. And we have a vacation process where excess street can be vacated. In this case, this was a half of a cul-de-sac, so it was half circle here that was dedicated at the time of the original subdivision, back when the first, when the street was built and the homes were built for the first time. And later on, that street was extended further and that cul-de-sac was designed and implemented just beyond this. So, there's not another half on the other side, and so it makes perfect sense to vacate this, put it back on the tax rolls. And the basis for the price on it is based on $12 per square feet for the 1,609 square feet. And that's based on what the assessor would assess it for once it's vacated. And so he would assess it for $12, so that is what we're using to value that. You had a handout tonight, the applicant has provided his thoughts on it, and he's here tonight with his attorney, so he may wanna take time and go through his thoughts on this. And at this point, this is scheduled for next Monday, June 11th, for council action. It's an ordinance, so it's second reading, so at this point, we're looking for a recommendation from the planning commission.
Cool.
That's it.
I have a few questions, but does anyone else wanna, any questions?
I have a few questions. Well, first of all, I mean, I think that, I mean, I read through the materials from the potential owner of this land. And I guess the biggest question to save everyone a lot of time tonight is, as far as our recommendation to council, our recommendation to council really is on whether or not they should vacate the land. I don't know if we have a lot of purview into the price that is, that the land is sold for. I don't know if that's the purview of the planning commission to determine how much the city should get for excess property. I don't know, and that's a question for staff. Is that something we would get into? I know we need to look at the comprehensive plan, we need to look at the long-range implications of vacating the right-of-way from a comp plan ordinance, planning commission perspective. I don't know if the value of the land is something that we are specifically instructed or would typically comment on. I don't know, in the past, this has come up.
Yeah, there's, in the past, you know, sometimes we had more, I guess, community interest in the vacation, so we would actually appoint viewers. And usually, you know, they would make recommendations on the land as well and so forth, and so...
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning, you said you would appoint, I'm sorry.
Viewers.
Point viewers. So, the council appoints at-large citizens, usually three or four, to just walk the property and make recommendations. A lot of times, those are next to the W O N D trail.
Right.
You know, they had potential for recreational purposes or community purposes. This one's pretty straightforward.
Right, but in the past, I guess the question is, did we comment on the value? Did we comment on the price?
It's included with it, so it's part of the package. There's not specific instructions one way or the other. It's really sort of a sale of land that you're commenting on from a land use standpoint. So, if you wanted to not comment on the price, you could be silent on that and just recommend on the vacation and let the council determine the price.
Well, I mean, just speaking for myself, I feel that normally, again, in a vacation process, again, the point of the planning commission review is to determine whether or not the land really has any value. You know, should it be retained in public ownership as right-of-way? Or is it, or is it truly something that we can do without and might be better in private hands? So, my, I mean, just in my opinion is that I don't know if we are the best equipped to make the judgment call on what the city should, should sell the land for or not. I think ultimately, it's city council.
I agree.
Has that purview, so that's just my, this is my opinion. I'm interested to hear what my colleagues have to say. But otherwise, from a big-picture standpoint, yeah, it seems that this land, it seems right, it's never been built. I don't think there's any point in ever building it. I don't see any other point, use for that extra right-of-way, so. From that point of view, I don't, I don't quibble with the request to vacate.
Yeah, it looks like the current setback on this serves to protect about four or five mature trees. So, I'm assuming if we vacate the land and it moves up towards the curb, the building envelope that those trees are gonna go. Would that be a safe assumption?
I mean, the, a grading plan will determine that, but yes, it will move the setback of, a bigger building envelope, bigger house, yes.
Yeah. Fortunate.
Yeah, always is.
I'm an occurrence in the city these days and bound to generate some ire from people wondering how we could let this happen.
I had a couple of questions. One is sort of about that, so, and I, overall, I think this is fine, and like Mr. Krasner said, I think it's pretty smart to just go ahead with it. But I am curious, because one of the points was that this lot, and actually, I guess, pretty much all lots of there, they're zoned R1A, but they're all substandard. And maybe I should just have already known this, but when, when it got zoned R1A and all the lots are substandard, what is the, what is the thinking there, that someday they would somehow become standard through, through combining properties? Or, and, and because of the substandard lot, does that affect what could be built on it if it remains substandard even though it's zoned R1A? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there's like two parts to that. I don't know the history of the zoning in the city, but obviously...
We have lots of situations where the zoning is...
These must have been built at a time when these lot sizes were allowed.
Right.
And later on, they rezoned and came up with two standard lot sizes, 7,500 and 11,250. And so, you're right, the whole street is basically substandard. This is one of the bigger lots.
Yeah.
On the street, so...
Even without this junk?
Yeah, and so in terms of square feet, so, yeah, it would be difficult to bring them all up to code. There's, there's no extra property to really do.
What was the year that these were platted?
Um, that I don't know.
The World War II, wasn't it?
Yeah. It could have been in the 40s, but...
Right, but it predates the current ordinance, so, right at the time, right. That's not uncommon.
No.
A lot of R1A lots are non-conforming.
Yeah, no, totally. I just, I'm just curious about that scenario and what that, what the impact is. Is there a difference in the size of the building that could be built on this lot if we don't add this in? I mean, I know it affects the...
Answer's yes.
So, we could build a bigger house with a bigger lot?
Yes.
More lot coverage. I mean, one other, I mean, I'm just, the other option would be, I mean, the applicant could always ask for a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to reduce the front setback if he was concerned about the location of the house only. I think obviously, there may be other considerations about size and other things. Why, obviously, I can understand why a potential owner might find it advantageous to want to acquire that, that piece of land. But as far as location goes, right now, it requires, right, if you want to meet the setback requirements, there's an artificial kind of extra setback that's the right-of-way causes. But, you know, that certainly would probably form the nuts and bolts of a hardship to ask the BZI for a variance to reduce that setback. If that was the main consideration. I think there are other considerations, but...
Right, totally. I mean, attachment force shows the setback, and it's got the curve around the nonexistent half cul-de-sac. So, that's one thing I thought, is if we didn't want to give up the land, I'm sure they could get a variance and still build up. Basically, I, my third point is, in the report, it has a very brief fiscal impact, which I would argue is potentially incomplete. It shows the revenue that this could generate, but it has, doesn't try to do any analysis on would a bigger building have a higher, you know, public service cost to the city. So, I, I think that fiscal impact, I don't, I think it would be hard to come up with an accurate number, but I think we should at least acknowledge that that's, it's not just gonna, you know, there's two sides to fiscal impact. But mostly, I'm confused about the person. I know you think we shouldn't necessarily weigh in on the, on the price. I'm sort of curious, the, my house, I own a house, and it's assessed every year, and they assess the value of the improvement and the value of the land, and it's included in the package. Do the math, and it comes out to like $45 a square foot. And presumably, if we sell this to them at any price, next year's assessment, their lot size is gonna go up, and presumably, that $45 a square foot's gonna be applied to the whole lot, and it'll be worth $45 a square foot, or whatever it is at the time. Is there a reason that we don't just use that number? Like, where does $12 a square foot come from?
It, it comes from the assessor, actually, when he assesses a property, the, there's a base amount that he assesses at a higher amount than $45 a square feet. So, the first, let's say, half the lot is assessed at a higher rate. Then, all the additional is assessed at a much lower rate.
Yeah.
And, and a property like this, this is like a little outlot that you're adding on to a lot, and so it's negligible, you know? And so, he doesn't assess it very high, and so, you know...
So, that's interesting, because I, the neighbor...
This property, once it's vacated, in the event it's vacated, he's gonna, it'll be added to that property, and he'll assess it $12 a square foot.
Huh.
And so, you know, assessed value tends to be a good way to value things.
And if they sell the property, then the owner will get presumably $45.
Yeah.
Market value for that.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, trying to, so you're saying that, I should do the math real quick, but you add this 1,600, whatever, square feet in, and then next year... Because I looked at the neighbor's assessment, their land is assessed to be the identical amount as this one. But next year, this house will have a lower land assessed value because they now have more land.
Well, now, it'll have, it'll have 1,609 square feet times $12 more.
Right, but, but so, but if you look at the overall lot, it's gonna be lower than $45 a square foot, because it gets $12 on...
It's gonna be adding $12 a square foot to the, that $45 you're referring.
So, I wonder if I could subdivide my lot, get it reassessed, the stuff that's not part of that envelope, right, at $12 a square foot, pay a lot lower taxes. I might try that.
Anyway, but...
That, that seems weird to me, so...
This is the kind of price range we've been in when we've vacated properties.
No, I know, but I also noticed that, like, 12 years ago, it was at like 1120 or something. So, even if you, even if you use their, you know, inflation number, you're looking at at least $15 a square foot, because 12 years ago. So, I, I just, I found the whole valuation to be mysterious, and I guess I still find it to be mysterious, but...
I mean, the only way to, I mean, everybody can, if somebody sells a property, you have five people look at it, they're all gonna come up with their price.
Well, that was my question. Did the city ever consider going to the neighborhood and seeing if anybody wanted to buy two parking spaces? Because I do think there's probably a market for that land.
I think there's a, the state code talks about the property gets offered to the adjacent property owners. A lot of times, it, it's in front of more than one.
Right.
In this case, it's not, and so it's easy to say, you know, that, you know, it'd be offered to this one. But in other cases, you'd offer, let's just say, it ran in front of three homes. You'd offer it to all three. If one of them didn't want to buy it, the other two could buy the other part.
Yeah.
So, we've...
All right. Well, I assume there's some, and it sounds like there is, there's some method to this that I don't get, so that's fine, as long as it's consistent. But otherwise, I think it makes sense. I mean, it's silly to have it there, and I think it seems silly to have a variance to let them build closer and have the city continue to own and all that stuff, so I don't think... I did notice in the, the previous one from 2006 on Huntington that, that there was some specification to where the money would go, and it went to the open space land. Is that where this is gonna go, or does that have to city council?
There's, I mean, there's no request to...
Put it anywhere.
Put it anywhere in particular. I mean, that one was next to a park that was so residential.
Was it residential?
Well, I mean, that's what the zoning is on the, on the parkland adjacent to it, so, where the soccer fields are.
Yeah, I just thought it went to that commercial building, though. I thought it was zoned.
It did, it did.
But it was, came from...
It was part of that street that has...
It's got the Easter seals now, yeah.
Warehouse use on both sides, commercial.
Anyway, overall, seems smart, seems like it should have been done 50 years ago.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, it's a leftover piece.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It, it makes sense to everybody to vacate it, so...
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Anyway, the, the applicant and the contract purchaser are here, so you should give them the opportunity to speak.
Well, I mean, if you guys, I think you're gonna sail through, but if you wanna say anything.
There are some things I'd like to say if I may.
Sure, sure, totally.
You can come up to the microphone, sir.
Yeah, it'll pick you up automatically.
Hi, I'm Jim Waters. Since May 15th, we are the owners of the property. Myself and Mr. Lewis, who's not in state, he's far away, so he can't be here this evening. So, so I'm here. I live locally, I live on the street, and there are some things I would like to say. There's, there's been several things that neighbors have asked me about it, and city council, a city council person has asked me a lot of questions about it. I'm a known commodity, a little bit in the community. We did soccer teams and helped at school a lot, we built some homes. So, the homes we've built in the city, all of them have far more trees on the property than before we developed the property. So, that assumption that we have a grading plan and we remove trees that don't go back is incorrect with us as a builder. And you can, I can give you addresses, you can come on the street and look at 606 and 604, and they're significantly wooded compared to what they were when we started. Trees are renewable, we're big tree planters. I bought 14,000 plants last week for some projects in Arlington. So, not required by the project, so...
Which part is incorrect? It's incorrect that...
It's incorrect, the assumption that there'll be trees taken down, and people will say, oh, how did this happen? We lost all the trees. We're big into planting trees, and, and you can see it in the two houses next door to this that we've done.
It's incorrect that the trees will be gone and nothing else will be put in its place?
I think it's incorrect to assume that the trees will be gone and we won't put back. We'll be planting new trees.
Yeah.
In fact, I've actually already contacted the city about those trees that are in that area, because they have these planners that somebody built around them 20 or 30 years ago that are girdling the trees and rotting them, and that's why there's so many dead branches. So, the trees, I already had an arborist look at them, are very unhealthy to begin with.
Yeah.
So, we would rather actually, if we took this property, we would just remove those now and plant new trees immediately. Well, I would in the fall. I'd plant them in October. I wouldn't do it this summer, but, I mean, that's what we typically do.
Yeah, I think, I think what Mr. Stevens was saying is, a lot of times, people, like, they see the trees come down, and they're like, oh, it's too bad you couldn't save the trees, but it's great to hear, it's great to hear that you get the trees back in there.
And I would agree that a lot of builders and developers put in the minimum.
Yeah, well, not just put in, but like, they don't, and I don't blame them, but they don't try too hard to keep older trees there. Because it's hard to work around. That's the feedback we tend to get, is like, why do you have to chop all the trees?
You're absolutely right, and we have another property nearby. We are planning the entire house around saving about a 100-year-old pin oak tree, and we paid somebody $2,200 two months ago to hand-climb it and hand-prune one tree.
Yeah.
So, I think we would probably get along on trees.
Yeah.
I hike in the Shenandoah Mountains every weekend, so I think we probably would get along on trees.
Yeah.
But, but being in the community, being in the neighborhood too, I mean, I have incentive for it to work. I would say the bigger house thing, with the envelope exactly the way it is now, I can put about 1,800 square feet per floor. So, I can build a, with full basement, I can build a 5,500-square-foot house there. This is not about size at all. We are not going to be building a bigger house if we get this. If you look at 604 and 606, which we've done, and we helped with some of the design on 603 across the street with their handicap ramp and their porch and all that, we really like front porches, a neighborly feel. So, you look around Patterson Ellison Street corner, where we did that years ago, having a house that looks welcoming and old-fashioned to the neighborhood is kind of our style. Never do two things the same. So, our intention is to have it in line with the other houses we've built. And the planning commission, as I wrote in my letter aesthetically, it was my understanding that that's one of the things they wanted. They didn't want that one house, like in Broadmont, you'd have one house way back from the others. So, I mean, I think, honestly, I think it makes sense for the planning commission for that reason, and I agree with the concept that it kind of solves a problem, as John Boyle described in his letter. I mean, it's this, and he calls it anomaly, a unique situation. So, I think if you look at it as a unique situation, and it's not earning tax, and we're the only potential buyers. So, if we build a brand-new house setback further than we want, and we can do that, I mean, I don't think in the next 200 years, anyone's gonna buy that property that's gonna earn any tax money. And the, the plus about selling it at one price is, I think it is, I, I think it needs to be looked at as a unique price. I think comparing it to a commercial parking space is different. Those are income-bearing. And, and I worked with commercial realtors, and I called them up and asked them, and they've never seen a commercial end-use comp go to a residential end-use comp. And I think it's hard to get a comp for this, because I think maybe John Boyle's right, maybe it's unique. Maybe it's the only little funny sliver left like this, and I don't know if there's a way to even research that. I don't know how to research that, but maybe the city land records, you could figure out if you have other slivers like that. But I just wanted to say, if you don't have funny other little slivers like this, then whether approving it or where the price is set, I don't think there should be a concern about precedence if it's the only situation like this. Because I've seen precedents mentioned in, in conversation and documents here, but if it's the only situation like this, I, I would just say a couple of things I'd like to add, because you have my document, you can read our logic and explanation. But, but it solves that problem I mentioned for the, for City of Falls Church. It raises taxes for City of Falls Church, which will go up with inflation, and we're paying for the process to create a tax income situation for the City of Falls Church. We're paying the recording fees and the survey fees, all of that. It creates the, what setback wants, it makes it more aesthetically pleasing and is preferred by the neighbors. They all came to the neighborhood meeting, I think, for one, didn't make it. I have all their letters of support with me here. I think we got all but one on the street that was in strong support. And they're in support, I think they're still at work, because we didn't ask them until Saturday evening if they wanted to comment. And we encouraged them, by the way, to show up and write negative comments if they didn't like the idea, and they didn't like our proposal. We told them we wanted...
Yeah, I actually knew somebody who lives on the street, and they, they might be the one that couldn't make it, but they said they, they're just staying out of it, because they know I'm on the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
They actually think it's fine, so...
Okay, so, and the last thing I would say is, a builder, we get to build in our style, which is, we don't like to build a 5,500-square-foot hot dog house turned sideways to the road or front to back to the road. We, if you see, I mean, we've won the CFC, you know, design award. We won Remodeling Magazine House of the Year in this area a few years back. We want to build something aesthetically pleasing. This is not to build something bigger. We can build something huge, bigger than we want to, but it'll, it'll be one of those set way back. And I just want to make that clear, because it's not needed. And we have product in the city that people can look at, and I have hundreds of customers in the area that people can talk to if they want to, but they can look at our product.
Yeah, I, I, I think you've convinced us. I think it's, it's a good move, so...
But, but I don't necessarily agree with the price, which I think I've made clear.
Neither do I, but I don't think I have any control over it, so it's not gonna bother me too much.
But, I mean, a question, since we're gonna, I didn't want to talk about price, but if we're gonna talk, I got it. I mean, a question for the, for the potential owner, I mean, wouldn't you...
The owner now, yeah.
You're the owner. So, I mean, wouldn't you say that it's part of the fiscal responsibility of the city, of selected officials, to get the best for any city property, whether it's land or an old fire truck? Isn't it incumbent upon the city to, as part of its fiduciary responsibility, to get the best price for any property that we, that's excess and needs to be disposed of?
I, I would say that undeniably, if you replace responsibility with money, that you want to, you want to be doing what's best for whomever you represent. And so, so there is that. I think also, the city is probably, I mean, this is my assumption, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, I think the city's swamped with a lot of activity going on with, with home construction, commercial redevelopment kicking in a lot of places. And I think that this maybe didn't get the best attention... this maybe didn't get the best attention, as I've tried to speak to in my letter here, because it's a little tiny thing and y'all have a lot going on, I mean, that's what I've been assuming. And, um, but the time involved in this is kinda staggering for me, I came in the third week of September and asked about the process, and this is the first time I've gotten to speak to y'all. And, and I'm paying three thousand dollars to have the house cleaned and painted inside this week, cause we're turning it into a rental house now, because we, we're not building. Had we known this upfront, we would have not actually been buying this, we would have been building a house starting two weeks ago. And so, I've had a real impact of carrying costs, four thousand, two hundred dollars a month roughly, plus now I'm fixing it, I'm making it a rental, and, uh, we're kinda, I'm not exactly in the fiduciary or financial position on it that, that I thought I'd be in, I had no idea it would take this long to, to find out what it would cost. And I didn't find out, as you've read, I didn't find out until the evening of that first hearing. But if it is truly unique and it is really small and it's of no use to anyone else, I think it just didn't maybe hit priority lists. And, but those impacts to me are real also, you know, and so, I don't wanna make it a judgment on people, but that process has created real costs for us that I never anticipated, and I frankly don't think is necessary or appropriate.
I mean, I don't know if we can speak to the process, but I mean, all, all we can say is what's in front of us today, and.
Yeah, this is the first I've heard of it, so, but, but I agree, to the extent, I've done stuff in the city and it takes longer than I think it should, and I do think part of it's that we're busy and the staff is not, yeah, not that big of a staff and, and, and there's a lot of stuff going on, so I definitely feel free there, uh, and wish that it had gone more smoothly.
Can, can I ask who I should be in conversation with about trying to finalize what can be perceived as a reasonable price by both parties, if that can happen, who, who would that be with? Cause the city council members told me it's not with the city council, and I was told by Wyatt it would not be at this hearing, but then I was later informed it would be at this hearing, so I feel a little bit confused about who to actually work it out with at this point.
Well, I don't think it's us, but mostly just based on what Mr. Fuller just said, um, uh, but I, I mean, I don't know, I can, I could check in with the city manager and find out.
If I, if I could meet with Wyatt and the, the assessor and Gary, maybe we could sit down and go through logic and, I don't know if there's.
I think it's the city manager ultimately who puts up.
Yeah, and it sounds like he's made an offer of the twelve-dollar square foot, so I don't, if you're trying to negotiate from that, I guess it's with Wyatt.
Yeah.
I don't think we are in the position to sort of recommend more or less than what Wyatt has recommended, I mean, I think ultimately he will present, present that to council.
Right, but I'm asking, so you're saying it would be Wyatt?
I believe so.
My understanding is that Mr. Shields set the twelve dollars, so presumably he's the one that you should try to get, if you want it to be something different, talk to him.
He's the highest.
But I do think that ultimately it goes to city council, and they either pass the ordinance, which has the price in it, or they don't. So even though city council might tell you that they don't have control over it, I, I presumably they could say, well, I'm not gonna vote for it if it's this dollar amount. But I, I'm pretty sure at most we can make a recommendation, which I don't know that we even have any kind of on the price.
Cause it's, it's not a developable piece of property by itself at all, at sixteen hundred, and by setback and by square footage. And we're not building a bigger product because of it, we're bringing the house closer to the street, which is what the planning commission, as I understand, it wants. So, um, again, I wouldn't have done it if I knew it would take this long, honestly, if I'd been told roughly this is the price and roughly this is how long it takes, I never would be here. But I didn't get that kind of communication, and this is where I sit.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, it's the old joke in middle school, you swim all the way across the English Channel, you almost swim across the English Channel, you say, right, when you see the shore, I'm too tired, and you swim back. I kinda feel like I don't wanna swim back, I wanna try to swim to the shore and see if there's a solution, you know?
Well, I think any solution that there is, is, it's gonna have to be with, with Wyatt, I mean, he, he, everyone in city hall, other than the elected officials answer to Wyatt ultimately, and then he, you know, presents that to council, so. I, I think, I'll restate what I said at the beginning, I think our main purview here is to really recommend to council from a comprehensive plan, long-range vision for the city, whether or not this, this excess right-of-way is something that we feel has any other value and, and should, you know, any concerns we might have about the city vacating it, and it sounds, assuming we don't have any concern, I think, again, the ultimate issue of price, I think is something that has to be left to council to, to deliberate on, and, and and when it comes down to it, I mean, you know, there, it's been sitting like that, you're right, for many decades, it could sit for many more decades, I don't know if that's the best use for it or not, but there's already a house on the property, um, another house could be built, there's a variance option, there are other options, so, I don't think that this, you know, so, I don't know, putting the spectrum to back the city into a corner that, you know, it's sort of, they must, you know, sell it or else, you know, we're somehow missing out on some huge opportunity, I don't know, but that's really for Wyatt to, to, to comment on.
So, so, I, someone will confirm to me after this hearing that I should contact Wyatt about, because this even contradicts what he's told me, so, I'm.
He made you the offer, did he not, I mean, he, I, I don't know.
Uh, he told me he had to get the recommendation on price from his staff, and that I would be able to present it at the council hearing to discuss the pricing at the council hearings, what he told me in a face-to-face meeting, so I, I just feel confused when I hear different things, so I'm just asking if maybe from this evening, we can submit that question, specifically, how and when should Mr. Waters discuss trying to reach a resolution of price, I, I'm just submitting that question.
I'm happy to send Mr. Shields an email, can't guarantee he'll reply to me, but you might have as much luck sending it yourself, but I'll, I'll send him a message saying that you came and you're confused, and see if he can reach out to you, I, I, I think it sounds like your best bet would be to continue to lobby him if you aren't happy with the price. And quite frankly, I would lobby city council, because ultimately they're gonna be the ones that vote on it, so, and they speak regularly with Mr. Shields, I'm sure if they, if you get a few of them on board with, with your price, they, they will go back to Wyatt and say like.
One of them so far.
Yeah, I, I email them all the time personally, you know, and.
Well, she came to me, she came to our neighborhood meeting, and she came with the understanding that we couldn't build a house on it without this, that's, that's how she had understood it from her research, and that's just not correct at all.
So, I think, seriously, if I were you, I would lobby city council, hey, I don't think it should be twelve, I think it should be whatever, and I would email Wyatt, but I'll email Wyatt after this meeting, just to let them know, uh, and I'm sorry it's not clear. We have, we have, in the pecking order, we're well below city council and Wyatt, so, there's not a ton I can do other than just tell them that you're looking for.
Okay, well, I'll do that.
The packet, there's a document called, uh, right-of-way guide, general outline for the vacation of right-of-way, and there is a, there is a line that says, planning commission and staff, assessor slash land sale price, I don't know what that means, I guess the assessor is the one, but the document kinda lays this out too.
Right, and, and, but, but that, but then I was told that wouldn't happen at this meeting, and this is the, the planning meeting, that it would happen by Wyatt, told me that would happen at city council, and city council's told me, no, that's not gonna happen at city council, so, so.
I would use this document as, as ammunition.
Well, I mean, maybe city council doesn't wanna debate it, you know, in open session, I mean, I don't, I don't know what, where they're coming from on this, but I think ultimately, you know, any discussion about the sale of the property, I think as far as, has, has to go through, through the city manager.
I'll, I'll, I'll speak to Wyatt, and I'll propose to him that I can meet with him in person with the assessor, and we can, we can.
That would be a very good idea.
Well, we can discuss the pros and cons are, cause the comp of a commercial parking lot that has ongoing income to a residential sliver that's not developable is an awkward comp at best, and so.
But as you point out, maybe there aren't any comps, so it'll come down to Mr. Shields' best judgment versus what you're willing to pay, and.
And we'll see what happens.
Business works generally.
But I think at this point, let's get the process rolling.
What, which process? Oh, yeah, we'll, I'll take a vote, is that what you mean? Yeah, so, are we good, we can vote?
Yeah, thank, thank you for hearing that out.
I don't wanna cut y'all, yeah, I, I'm just saying, I don't think we could do much influence the price in either direction, so, yes, Ms. G?
I have some citizen comments that came in, if I emailed today, if I could summarize them.
Do they all say they, they favor it?
There's nine, seven or nine.
Cause we're leaning towards that, I, I have this spidey sense.
Why don't you read them into the record or summarize them?
Okay, well, one, um, is Laura and Jeffrey Stricker, um, it's six zero six Oak Haven, and they've been residents of the city for twenty-four years, and seventeen years lived at Oak Haven Drive, um, to express their support of the vacation of land. Um, and then there's another from Whitney Ogden, and she and her husband live at six ten Oak Haven, and they wanted to express their support, um, that they're familiar with the proposed land valuations, and the, um, the appropriate value of the land is closer to the value than what had been proposed.
She was suggesting the close, the value's closer to what I proposed, she believes in what the city has proposed, and there are other neighbors who ended up chiming in, there's the day one, so I didn't have time to.
That's fine.
That's fine, and I, you can, Ms. G can include, include that in the, those in the record, but I don't think we, I think we're all, well, let's just take a vote, cause I, I have a feeling I know how it's gonna go.
Me too.
You wanna tell her?
We need to craft a motion, though, the motion.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes.
The motion.
Could someone please, I think there's a.
I'll be happy to second it, but I don't have the recommended.
Well, I have it in here, but this is gonna be.
You wanna make changes to it?
The motion currently lists the value recommended by, I'll read the motion.
What, yeah, the, the, yeah, the, they gave a sample motion here in the thing, I, personally, when it comes to value, I don't, my main expression here is that it's a confusing thing, and it sounds like the assessor has his technique, and I'm guessing that Mr. Shields and the assessor have talked about it, I don't feel compelled to suggest a different price.
Right.
If I were gonna set a price, it would be different, but.
I'm gonna defer to the assessor, to the city manager, and I, I think the city should get the best price that, for the land as they can get, for, cause it's, as any, as, like, any other piece of public, any other public property, land or, or, or tangible, or anything else, uh, the city should get the best value for it that it can, um, I think it's incumbent upon the city to do that, as opposed to, you know, selling something at, at, at a discount, um, I just don't see the, why we would do that, so.
Yeah, so, are you comfortable with the motion as it is, or would you like to adjust the purchase price to indicate, I would support indicating some, some sentiment of getting the highest value that we can, but.
Right, I would, yeah, I, without even naming a dollar figure, I mean, we could just say that.
No, not prejudiced.
You shouldn't, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think we, yeah, I don't think we should, we should recommend a, a dollar figure like what's proposed here in draft, I, I think we should say that whatever price the, the city assessor and the city manager, uh, uh, determine i- is, is appropriate.
That sounds good, do you wanna just?
So, alright, so I'll make the.
Adjust that motion on the fly and.
Yes, I'll do that, I'll make the motion, so, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll, I'll move, uh, that we recommend to city council approval of ordinance T zero one eight dash oh six to vacate a portion of the unimproved public street right-of-way of Oak, Oak Haven Drive, and sale to the adjacent real property contract owner for six oh eight Oak Haven Drive, uh, conditioned upon, um, I'll get to the price last, uh, that the subject vacated property is subject to a subsequent lot-line adjustment, and is the responsibility of the applicant prior to future grading plans, and I believe, just pause the button for a second, I believe that lot-line adjustment is for a tiny fraction of that corner, if I looked at the vacation plat.
It's a one foot.
There's a tiny little part of the corner of that radius of the curve that would actually be, right, would be adjusted to square off the lot, is that right?
Yes.
Is that what that's referring to?
I mean, well, at the time of.
There's a vacation plat in our documents that, and I think that's what that, is that what that, that is referring to?
That's what I think it is.
Well, there's a lot-line adjustment to adjust the lot itself, but then there was a, I'm just saying, I wanted to, I wanna condition this on that plat, cause there's a vacation plat in our documents that shows, again, that tiny little piece to square up the corner, I think your report mentioned that, right?
It is mentioned.
Am I correct?
It is mentioned in the report, yes.
So, okay, so I'm gonna, again, I apologize, un, unpause, uh, subject, so this, that the subject vacated property is subject to a subsequent lot-line adjustment, uh, consistent with the vague, the proposed vacation plat, uh, presented to the commission, uh, and is the responsibility of the applicant prior to the future grading plan permits. Uh, next condition, associated document preparation, recording costs and fees are the responsibility of the applicant. And then third, that the purchase price, uh, is consistent with a, a figure that is agreed upon by the assessor and the city manager based on market conditions, uh, as determined by, as determined by them.
Sounds good. I'll second it.
That's my motion.
I was gonna ask if I could ask a question about the fees you referred to, cause we've had conversations and questions about the fees, Gary, is it appropriate at this time, or should I discuss with Wyatt, this, this is the page I asked him a month and a half or so ago about these fees that was in your letter, and he said he was gonna cur, confirm back some of my questions about these fees, and those haven't been answered in the last month and a half. And so should I ask them to you, or should I ask them to Wyatt if, if I'm meeting with him about?
I think that has to happen offline, I mean, we just made a motion, we're, we're, I think, I think the public comment portion is, is completed.
So we got, uh, motion and second, any comments on the motion, second, alright, let's just take the vote, and we'll get back to you in a second.
Ms. Hockamiri?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teets and Mr. Bodisco are absent.
Uh, I suggest you circle back with Wyatt on that. Or talk to Gary after the meeting, I, we, we can't really help with those details.
Well, the, the, he just mentioned them, that's what.
Whatever the fees, whatever the fees are, our, our motion was to, that, that you'd cover them, versus the city covering any fees to do any of this, this, uh, transaction, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Alright, thank you and good luck, I hope you make it to France.
Well, I made, we, there's a, my partner wants to turn around and swim back a long time ago, I told him we've come this far, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have these couple of meetings and see if we work it out at this point. Again, not realizing it was gonna take this long just to find out a price.
We got past the circle.
Yeah.
The lower that they see in here.
Thank you, and thank you for your service and time.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, I reserve it.
Really warm in here. You guys, my only one?
No, I'm a little warm.
I always bring a jacket, I think, cause I never know what it's gonna be.
Yeah, sometimes it's freezing, but. It's, it's tough, I mean.
A full set of copies.
That's always. If I dropped the ones that are here.
Yeah, okay.
And had that paperclip on it? Yeah, so we, the neighbors kept showing up with them, I mean, it's. And so, I think you got, there's.
Situations are annoying.
And we, of course, didn't include ourselves, cause I live on the street.
And I always feel bad when it takes a long time to get through the process, but I also don't really know, what do I need exactly to roll it down, I don't know.
I said at eighty-two, I'm not crazy.
But on the price, he'll have something that he'll sell for at least.
I, I, I don't.
Having hot flashes, but.
I find land assessing a mysterious science.
Definitely, and, and, and a zoning process is.
Yeah, alright.
Under a certain.
Moving right along, we have no other business on the agenda.
It's okay, no, thank you for that, I'm.
Yeah, and then we have the approval of the minutes, so we've got two of them, we have the April sixteenth and the May seventh, and I think we have in our packet, Tim sent in changes.
Yes, I, uh, neglected to bring my notes at the last meeting, and, uh, Chair Wodiska kindly allowed me to come back this month with my recommended adjustments, so, they are these. And basically, all I did was just to, uh, take, um, Ms. G's minutes and just expand a bit to get a more complete, uh, rendition of what Stuart Schwartz told to us.
Excellent, so let's start with these, this is.
If I could just.
Sure.
Express something, um, I don't get a disc of these meetings while we're here at this location, so, it's just.
It's all from your notes.
Try to just distill from my notes and.
Got it.
Hope that they're as accurate as possible.
Fair enough.
As simple.
Fair enough. So, April sixteenth, we have Mr. Stevens' changes, any other changes? No. Can we get a motion?
I move that we, uh, accept the minutes as change for, uh, the sixteenth.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then May seventh, any adjustments, changes? It looked good to me. Move those through.
I move that we accept the minutes of May seventh.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, alright, great, done with the minutes, we are on to any planning commission reports, anybody, anything interesting to say?
Yeah, it's good.
Mr. Krasner reports that the AC is on.
I'm reporting that, I feel, yeah, I'm not crazy, it was set at eighty-two, I'm glad you know.
Wow.
From now, as long as we're in this building for the rest of the year, let's remember that, cause I've been hot in every meeting, thank you, that's it.
Any reports?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, report that there is an affordable housing, uh, revi, uh, commission that's, or a group that's working on revising the affordable housing policy, and it is, you know, not in its final form, but at my suggestion, uh, at the last meeting, with all the new development coming along up at, uh, the school site, that we needed to put in writing what some of our aims were, and when the biggest was, is to change the six percent to, uh, to either eight or ten percent, and some other things as far as the AMIs and things like that, but, the whole final report, but just, just to have it out there and, you know, that people know that we are going to be changing some things along the way.
Got it, any upcoming meetings that might be interesting?
Um, I don't know when the next one's gonna be, it all depends on availability of people.
Alright, any other reports? Nothing?
Yeah, there's this other one that I, uh, there's the VDOT meeting, Gary, do you know anything about this?
That's tomorrow evening.
Tomorrow evening?
Yeah, that's the, uh, update on the inside the Beltway projects, including the bike path over.
The bridge over, alright.
So they're just gonna give a status, is my understanding, it's over there at York Ten High School.
Right, right, but I was just, was wondering if any staff was gonna be there, cause it sounds like, you know, it might be some information, you'll be there.
I'm sure staff has been in contact with VDOT periodically, I imagine.
I mean, I, I saw the announcement on that, but, um, Kerry and Paul tend to cover that area.
Right.
Alright.
To go to council, so I will.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Next time.
Till next time.
That's all I've got.
Send Wyatt our regards about that. Send Wyatt our regards about that, about O'Keefe and Drive.
He's actually been negotiating with him for like six weeks.
I'll send him. Yes, I suspected as much. Alright, anybody else? Anything? I don't have anything. Alright, we're good. Planning Director's Report. Suri, are you our Planning Director now?
I am filling in for Mr. Stoddard, who is on vacation.
Well deserved, I'm sure.
Yep. Um, there are several items in the Director's Report, and I'll just very briefly highlight, um, these, uh. The first item is the Planning Commission's work plan. Indeed, the first attachment before you is an updated version with actual and planned dates for the work plan items. Um, the second item is a timeline infographic that provides the latest status updates for, uh, major projects under development in the city. Um, the third item is the, um, NVTA grant application letter of support. The letter before you, uh, in the attachments was submitted to the NVTA on May ninth, two thousand eighteen, in support of the city's grant application for West Falls Church multimodal transportation improvements. The final vote on that application is scheduled for June fourteenth. The fourth item is the PAS report on downtown revitalization. The American Planning Association regularly publishes, uh, planners advisory service reports on a variety of topics. Attached is the executive summary of a report on downtown revitalization for small and mid-sized, mid-sized cities. Uh, several of the recommendations there are relevant for, uh, cities' commercial areas and developing the West Falls Church area. The fifth item is the Walk Boston Low Cost Pedestrian Improvements. Uh, the Walk Boston is an advocacy group for the health and the environment. The attached publication by this group suggests a variety of progressive tools for improving walkability. Uh, suggested tools include neighborhood gateways, pop-up parks, and improved streetscape, all of which could be useful for the city. Um, the last item is the Park Score. Park Score is a national organization that compares and ranks park systems in different cities across the US. Uh, Park Score is a quantitative analysis of park systems based on a number of factors, which is also in your, um, meeting materials. Uh, Park Score recently released their two thousand eighteen rankings. As usual, the Twin Cities were at the top of the list. Washington DC and Arlington came in at number three and number four respectively. Uh, communities with high rankings all have in common a long-term commitment to park systems that include a variety of activities for different, uh, user groups. That concludes the Planning Director's Report. And if you have any questions on those, I'm happy to share that with, uh, Mr. Stoddard for his response at the next meeting.
Any questions? Alright.
Just a comment, I think that, that, glad you included the PAS report, I think that's, uh. If folks haven't read it, it's an excellent piece of work.
Worth a read, alright. Great. Alright, I think that's all we have for the session. We're gonna go into, well, this says work session before adjournment. Is that normal?
Technically.
Um, the way I have to post it to Grenicus is their rationale.
Okay, so.
If I say adjournment, then they won't pick up anything.
But we do have to adjourn first, technically.
Alright, so we will adjourn technically, but the, the camera will keep rolling.
Motion to adjourn?
All of those in favor? Alright, we are adjourned, and now we have a work session from these guys, I'm guessing. They're not just here to watch our.
Uh, so the applicant is here and Mr. Painter is representing, um, uh, Don Byer Motors, Inc. in this application. Uh, before I turn it over to them for their presentation, just to highlight the staff report, uh, before you. Uh, the item is before you tonight as a work session item for your initial feedback and guidance to the applicant and staff. This project is for a new two-story motor vehicle showroom on, uh, eleven nineteen and eleven twenty-one West Broad Street. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing buildings on those properties and consolidate the two properties to construct a new showroom. Uh, per the city, per the city code, the applicant is required to file a site plan for the construction of this new structure. But at this time, uh, what's before you for consideration are the two variances and a special use permit for the proposed project. Uh, the requested variances and special use permit require approval by the BZA after a recommendation by the Planning Commission. And those include a variance to allow a motor vehicle sales facility to be located within two hundred feet instead of three hundred feet of an R district. The site is located two hundred feet from the WNOD Trail, which is zoned residential. A second variance to allow a front yard setback of twenty feet instead of twenty-five feet in the M one district. And a special use permit to allow a motor vehicle sales use as a conditional use in the M one district. At this time, the application is under staff review. A complete staff analysis will be provided with your next staff report. Um, and that meeting is for, uh, scheduled for July second. Um, the BZA is scheduled to consider the application at their July twelfth public meeting, following the recommendation, uh, by the Planning Commission on July second. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Painter for his presentation.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Rankin, members of the commission. My name is Andrew Painter. I'm a zoning attorney with the law firm of Walsh Calucci, uh, speaking tonight on behalf of Don Byer Motors, Inc. Uh, joining me tonight is John Altman. He's the chief, uh, operating officer of, uh, Don Byer Motors. And then Rui Point, uh, who is with, um, Penny Design Group. They are the architect on the project. Uh, Antoinette Isherwood, who is with Walter O. Phillips, that many of you all know. She was running just a little bit behind, but she's, uh, she's here and she'll hopefully be here soon and she can answer any questions about things like storm water management, interior parking lot landscaping, and the like. Uh, Akita did a good job of summarizing the application, but I thought I would just sort of highlight a couple of things. Um, as many of you all know, uh, Don Byer has operated in the City of Falls Church for going on four decades or so. Uh, it's a proud member of the community. Um, the showroom and the principal offices of the dealership are located at twelve thirty-one West Broad Street, uh, right at the intersection of Gordon Road and, uh, West Broad. And then there's the service facility, uh, which is located at one 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 seven West Broad Street. And the new vehicle inventory and the used vehicle inventory, uh, is largely, uh, behind the existing dealership on parcels in Fairfax County. Recently, uh, and, and Rui can speak to this as well, uh, but recently Volvo Cars, which is sort of the corporate arm of Volvo, has issued a brand-new image, uh, program requirement, uh, for all of the dealerships, uh, that, that are Volvo flagged. And the bottom line is that Don Byer Volvo either has to upgrade its existing vehicle showroom or relocate the showroom to a space that meets these new franchise requirements, or it risks losing the franchise. Um, so Don Byer Volvo looked at a few different options. They looked at upgrading the existing space, uh, and this is a building, the existing dealership was constructed nineteen fifty-nine. It's had a couple of cosmetic changes since then, um, but it was determined after consultation with the architects and engineers that upgrading that existing showroom would be cost prohibitive. It would also be disruptive to the dealership's existing operations. Uh, and then Don Byer also looked at leasing new space, um, potentially looking at some of the mixed-use projects. And again, this is not for new vehicle inventory or service. This is purely for a showroom. And the way, then, correct me if I'm wrong, Rui, but the way that things seem to be going, uh, with dealership showrooms, is that they're moving to a much smaller footprint, uh, more of an urban footprint that actually has sort of a retail, uh, look and connotation to them. And I was just over at, um, uh, at Tyson's Corner Center this past week and amazed to see the Tesla dealership on the second story of that. And that's, that's kind of the direction that things seem to be going. Uh, ultimately, uh, Don Byer Motors found, uh, or selected two parcels, the ones that are before you. Uh, this is just located about three hundred and eighty feet east of the existing dealership, right next to the Kia dealership, kind of right across from the Staples, uh, on West Broad. Uh, this is where the Like New Building.
Where the maintenance, uh, the car parts used to be?
Correct. Well, it's right next to the car parts. Um, and it's, it's two parcels. Uh, it's, it's the old Preston Signs building. Uh, and then it's the Like New Auto Refurbishment, uh, Center. And these are two buildings on two parcels. They're immediately adjacent to each other. They share a common wall. And, uh, we started looking at that, um, and, and saying, okay, well, what are some of the pros and cons? And I think the pros seem to be, one, they're both owned by the dealership, so, so there's no cost associated as far as, you know, acquiring the land or paying rent. Uh, second, they have equal visibility on Broad Street, uh, that, you know, equal to the existing dealership. Um, third, and this is a very important thing, it's far more efficient because now the showroom would be located immediately adjacent to the service department. Um, you know, which is, which is good, cause right now it's, they're separated by a block. Um, they're also surrounded, this parcel's also surrounded by, by M one uses, existing industrial, uh, uses on the property. Uh, and then it also offers the opportunity to consolidate the dealership's administrative offices into, uh, into one, one place. And so, as Akita mentioned, there are a, a few requests. One is a special use permit, um, for the actual new motor vehicle dealership. Uh, one is a setback variance, uh, and because this is a M one zoned property, the setbacks are twenty-five feet. Uh, and that's just because of its industrial zoning. Um, but we have requested twenty feet to be consistent with the other sort of commercial and retail uses that you see up and down Broad Street. Uh, and just sort of indicative of the existing use. Uh, the third request is a location variance. The, the zoning ordinance, as Akita mentioned, uh, requires motor vehicle sales facilities to not be any closer than four hundred feet to an existing R-zoned property. And here we are within two hundred feet of an existing R-zoned property, and that R-zoned property would be the WNOD Trail. Uh, there are intervening parcels between this parcel and that R-zone parcel and, and the other sort of properties along Railroad Street. Uh, and then the last one is a loading space modification to reduce the loading from two required spaces to one required space. Um, so though, that's sort of it in a nutshell, and what I thought I would do is just to stop talking ad nauseam. I'd like John to sort of highlight, uh, some of the features and some of the things that, uh, that, that Byer's been weighing and, uh, and then turn it over to Rui to walk through sort of the architecture as well.
John can talk, I mean, you, you wanna?
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, go ahead.
Let's put this out so you all can see.
Yeah, I'll hold it here. I'll, I'll hold it. So, I'm gonna, this is the, the West Broad Street is at the main elevation, and then there'll be some visibility on the side also. This would be what the side would look like, and this is based on, uh, the Volvo corporate image, which is, uh, evolved into an Apple store. That's kind of the look they wanna, they wanna do. It's a, a, it's sort of a Scandinavian minimalist look. You know, the signage should be, they, they don't like a lot of signage, but they want it to be very crisp and distinct, and it should be part of the building facade, which is what we've done. We incorporated it. Uh, this is a diffuse white glass, uh, and then this would be clear glass, so they have these little picture windows. So the idea is not to show a lot of cars, but to show one very pristine vehicle and bring you in and let you, or, you know, get on the iPad and order the car that you want, instead of having to go out and, and walk around and see if cars to find the one you like. The idea is to bring you in, into the retail experience, have a coffee, sit down, talk to your, to your advisor, and order the car that's exactly what you want. And, you know, in the future, you may not be ordering a car, maybe like a cell phone, you may be subscribing a car.
Actually, it's kind of, it's kind of like Back to the Future. There, there was a dealership, one of the original dealerships, we found out when we were doing some of the work in Fairfax, is that there was a dealership identical to this approved back in nineteen seventy-four for just a vehicle showroom. And I guess the, the idea back then was you go in, you put the order for the car, and you come back on, you know, two weeks later and your car's there. Um, but John, do you wanna talk just briefly about?
Uh, yeah, it's, thank you all for your time tonight. Really appreciate it. You know, as you know, we've, we've been in business here in the city for over forty-five years, and I think we've, we've been an important part of this community. I, I remember growing up, seeing the, the white Volvo police cars driving around the city.
There's one in the parade, there was one in the parade last week.
That's, yes, that's ours. We, um, we're proud of that car. We, we used to joke, when I was a kid, that the speed limit was twenty-five miles an hour around the city, cause that was all Volvo would do, right? As fast as they would go. But, you know, that's the kind of stuff that. That's the kind of stuff that sort of helped put us on the map and the city as sort of a unique city, um, with those Volvos. So, um, uh, some of the things that we've, uh, been involved with in the city, as you know, like the Memorial Day Fun Run last week. Uh, those T-shirts that we've been providing for over thirty years, we've seen them in California, Colorado. Um, we even saw them in Europe, so they're sort of all over the place. Our, our pig statue out in front of our dealership is, become a landmark. It's, uh, people use it to, you know, figure out directions around the city, and it's sort of the welcome from the west end, uh, to the city. So, um, you know, my family's been a, a big part of Falls Street City, and we'd like to stay in Falls Street City. We would love to stay in the current showroom that was built long before my time, but it's just not possible with the requirements from Volvo. We have to go into something like this in order to make it, uh, feasible. Um, the other piece that, that Andrew didn't mention in, in, in this move, um, it would allow us to do something else with the current facility.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, this would be sort of the first step for us to sort of consolidate the dealership into one area of our property, um, because we believe that, that area is right for some redevelopment and some repurposing of that area, and so this, this would allow us to do that. So we think it makes sense for the business, uh, and we think it makes good sense, uh, for the city. So thank you.
So at, at this time, um, you know, be happy to answer any questions, or do you wanna walk through some of the additional?
Yeah, I, 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 so, uh, I'll probably try to, you know, look, I'm gonna.
Okay, why don't I, why don't I hold you?
Let me show you the, let me, let me pull the floor plan so you can see. You know, it's a fairly compact building, uh, I'm sure if you, if you go out to Tyson's and you know what the dealerships are out there, you know, you go into a dealership and you see ten cars, and you can probably find one that's probably ninety percent of what you want. This is not the intent with this. We have a two-story showroom, but at most, we're gonna have probably about four cars in there. So it's a fairly small footprint of a building, and then we have a little service component, which is this, this right here where you would drive in, and your service advisor, you know, would greet you, a porter would be there, they take your car, you get a loaner, you go away, and then they bring into the service building. So there's very little mobility of the car by the, by the owner. The idea is to, you know, if you're, if you're coming to buy, you're gonna be in here in the showroom. If you're coming to drive, to deliver, you have this, you drop your car off, you come in, you, you get a bagel or a cup of coffee, and someone either picks you up or you, or you're a loner, gets dropped off for you. And that's really all that the building needs to do. So it's a fairly small footprint of a building. The total, between the two floors, we're looking at, uh, I think it's what's ten thousand? Right around ten thousand square feet. The second floor would be, is, uh, two-thirds of, of the footprint, and that would be for administrative offices. I don't know if you know or not, and John didn't explain, but right now, on there, where the current dealership is, they have administrative offices in various little buildings. And they, you know, sometimes you meet in one building, sometimes you meet in another building, the contractor may be in another building, but the service manager may be someplace else. This allows us to meet some of the requirements of the dealership, of the dealership, the franchise agreement on that. We would have everything consolidated, all the, uh, tag and title franchise, uh, you know, the F and I work, insurance work, could all be handled under one roof, which is really a positive. And the nice thing about it being that it's all contained here, also the service building being adjacent to it, you're not gonna have someone jockeying cars back and forth. Once it gets dropped off, it's just gonna go into service and come out. So, in terms of, of trips that the car makes while it's in their possession, if it's a, if it's a, an owner, uh, an owner's car, uh, is gonna be very minimal. So it, it gives them a real opportunity to really consolidate all the operations with a much smaller footprint, they're much more efficient. And given it's gonna be a new building, I'm sure, you know, everyone is concerned with, uh, with your carbon footprint and, and your environment. Uh, you know, it's gonna be a, a higher functioning building, a more efficient building, all the LED lighting, a better roof system. You know, no heat island, you know, the lighting's gonna be, you know, instead of nineteen eighty-five or nineteen ninety era lighting, which is what's out there now, we're gonna be at, you know, twenty-twenty lighting, uh, which is, you know, it's probably about ten percent the energy usage, it's a, a lot more efficient. So, their operational costs go down, the building costs go down, and hopefully it's a facility you can have for fifty years and, you know, still be relevant instead of a building that, you know, what you have right now is fifty years old. We can certainly, you know, put money into it, but it's, you know, maybe gets another fifteen years or so, and then it's really an obsolete building. This wouldn't be. This would be a building that would function on this site for quite some time, and it's on, on already owned land. So it makes a lot of sense, it makes a lot of sense for the Byer family, but it also makes a lot of sense for, for Volvo, which has made a, a long-term commitment to electric vehicles and to urban sites. And this is kind of the, their ideal demographic. If they're gonna sell to people, it's gonna be fair, you know, fairly educated population in, in a more urban site. And this is, this is the, the, the model going forward of what they want.
And it's not only just inside the building, but around the building too. There's, um, you know, one of the things that, you know, the thing is paid from stem to stern right now. And we are gonna be upgrading to current DEQ stormwater regu-, you know, requirements, regulations. One of the things that we wrestled with was whether or not to ask for a waiver of the interior parking lot landscaping and, and those sorts of things, just given the fact of, you know, sort of what's around it. So my hat's off actually to Walter O. Phillips, the engineer, on this, only because they found a way to provide the, actually, a couple of excess parking spaces on here, uh, but also provide the full interior parking lot landscaping.
Yeah, it's about fifteen percent green area. Right now, we're only at about two or three percent. There's very little, and we'll end up with about fifteen percent green area.
Right. And, 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 you know, even though, with what Rui said too, I mean, yeah, this is a building that we're trying to build for, you know, you know, obviously to last, you know, several decades, but we're not sure exactly what the dealership's gonna look like, uh, long-term, and we're frankly not sure what the Gordon Road Triangle's gonna look like from a planning perspective too. So, um, but we want to create a building and at least set that footprint contemplating eventual redevelopment for all of Gordon Road. Um, and, and if this building, um, is constructed, we want it to be either, uh, able to be set in the right location, uh, to be repurposed in the future, torn down, rebuilt, uh, but actually be able to stand the test of time too, um, if, if it needs to, and be able to fit in with what's around it.
And that's why I mentioned the second floor, because right now, those other functions are scattered throughout various parcels that they have. This allows, you know, for, for the other, the older, uh, you know, I guess the west side of Gordon Road, uh, bring some of those, uh, administrative and, and, uh, executive functions from there, locate some in this building, serve things, consolidate. So that area then, if you're looking at a, at a redevelopment of that area, which I know the city is, is very interested in, it really gives you all, you know, the possibility without having to hurt your operating business. You can, you can basically separate your development and real estate from the operating business. And right now, it, it's gonna, it would be very difficult to do that and still meet the dealership requirements that Volvo has, you know, has required of you.
I wanna say one other thing too, if I may. You know, when you're driving down Broad Street and you come in, you, you almost miss the existing dealership. Um, but as you go past the light at Birch Street, this is, it's not gonna be dramatic, but it is going to be visible. And it's going to be, um, I think, a source of pride for Volvo, but to be able to say Volvo and then Falls Church on it, I think is gonna be something that I, I would like to see too, as you sort of drive east on, on West Broad Street.
Volvo has told us they do not want Byer on here, they want Falls Church.
It's Falls Church, you're right. It's Falls Church, you're right.
Really, take him by?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, I think you'll get placemats or something.
That's, that's unusual.
Can you say just a little bit about the, the requirements from the, the corporation? Is that, oh, there's aesthetic requirements? Is this, is it energy efficiency?
It's all of those. Yeah, it's all of the above. I mean, they, they have a requirement on the glass that you use, the lighting that you use. You have to have a certain amount of sustainability built into the furniture, natural materials. We have to use a real hardwood. I mean, there's a lot of things that they require. Those are not specific or germane to, you know, the approval because they're interior. But the materials that they use are all of, you know, Volvo's, you know, they're very forward-thinking. They're, I mean, I think they've announced by twenty-twenty, they want everything to be electric. Either it's either gonna be a hybrid or electric, you know, there's no.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to build more of a, of a friendly living space for people to come to. We're, we're currently doing our Sterling location and converting it from the old eight-car showroom into what will be like a four-car showroom or three-car showroom when it's all said and done.
Yeah, and here's a perfect example. It's not called the showroom, it's called the lounge and the living room.
Right, right, right.
So that's, that's what they want.
And every dealership's having to go through this. And didn't you say?
Yes.
Didn't you say that this, when you all came up with this and you presented that to them, this is almost a model going forward?
Yeah, this, when we, you know, we, we work with, we do a lot of dealership work, so we work with Volvo corporate. And when I first sketched this up and, and we presented to, you know, Paul Syracuse and Steve Klipstein, which are their two national brand dealers, they said, wow, this is exactly what we want in urban settings. And, you know, they kind of, without having to go through a very rigorous formal approval process, they kind of gave thumbs up and said, you know, head down to the city and get your approved. We're ready to, you know, to get you going on this, because this is exactly what we, you know, what we want urban dealerships to be like.
I mean, is that, I'm just looking at the materials, is that, I mean, is that glazing? What, what are we talking about?
It's a glass, it's an etched glass.
So it's glass, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's what it is. It's a, it's a, a clear glass, it's sandblasted and then put a wa, a white coating on the backside. So it has a soft glow when you light it up. And that gives you a lot of contrast with the Volvo blue and the signage. And then this, these are little picture windows and those are clear glass, so that you'll be able to see the vehicle. The idea is to give you a little picture into the living room is what they call it.
But the upper level will be, what's gonna be on the upper level, offices?
Just offices, yeah, administrative offices. It's not, it's not part of the showroom, it's not gonna be for customers.
But can those folks see out of, I mean, are they?
Yeah, what they'll be, they'll up here. So we have windows, if you look at, at the, at this elevation, what we'll have is on the second floor, we'll end up with some glass windows back in here as you turn around the side. We just haven't quite figured it out exactly where they're gonna be, but there is gonna be some clear glass on that for the second. And that'll, that won't look out onto Broad Street, that'll look out onto the side yard. But if you have a two-story showroom, if you can imagine being in a loft, you would be able to look across and look down into, in, if you're on the second floor, you would look over into the showroom. The showroom will be a twenty-foot height and then the, the offices will be, you know, ten feet of that. So they'll, they won't have direct view out into the street, but they're gonna look through the, you know, through the showroom win, through, through the picture windows, which would be these own, you know, so.
Got some questions?
So this is showroom right here, and this is the second floor, so they overlook. This is a two-story space in the showroom, so these offices overlook. And then they, they'll have windows on the side.
Do you know when the current building would be demolished then? Is there any kind of a timetable?
You know, a lot of it, I'm not gonna say anything, but.
Yeah, at this point, no. This is sort of first, first step. And then that would allow us to, to start really planning phase one and phase two of the entire Gordon Road Triangle. That, our, our hope would be as quick as possible, quite honestly.
That building, it's an interesting building, but it kind of pinches that sidewalk there.
It does.
It's, it's right up on it.
Right. We, we, we've already sort of done some legwork and looked at possibilities, but we haven't gotten too, too far because we still need to figure out how to keep the business surviving and doing that as well. But it is our intention to do something quickly.
Speaking of sidewalks, you gonna do the same thing that's there now or is it gonna be wider? Or thinking in the future for pedestrians? Because that, eventually that entire side, we hope, will be redeveloped from, from down at West Street all the way on up to Shreve. And of course, the Gordon Triangle has come back two or three times. I've been, you know, around for eighteen years now. And, you know, we had that coming in a couple of times. And of course, it was consolidation of property and everything that kept anything from going through. Are they gonna need any extra curb cuts or using the same ones that are there now?
Commissioner Hockenberry, they'll be using the exact same curb cuts, but the buildings right now, I think, are, what, what's the offset on them right now from?
They, I don't know, but they're closer.
Much closer.
So they are making the sidewalk.
They're twelve feet right now.
Twelve feet.
We measured from the curb to the existing buildings, twelve feet.
And we're seeking to move them to twenty feet back to be in line with.
So your sidewalks increasing to eleven point eight feet.
And then at this point, quite a bit of car storage is over there off of Shreve Road. Is that gonna remain?
Yes, it will be. Frankly, there's no other place to put it right now. And we did take through a special exception in Fairfax County to get that permitted about two years ago or so. So it'll remain in Fairfax County.
Well, that's gonna then alleviate or won't be able to re, you know, reuse that type of thing, you know, in, in future development. There was a time where all the storage of the cars were gonna be underground and all that kind of stuff. And it was really quite a, I think it was the Holmes idea, did you ever see that?
Yeah, our.
Fantastic, fantastic development ideas.
Our, our, our hope over the next decade or so is that car inventories will become much, much smaller for car dealerships. As we see things like subscription models and more of a European style of selling cars where you order your vehicle. Volvo is opening up a plant in South Carolina. That will greatly reduce the lead time from ordering a vehicle. And our hope is, is that most people will directly order a car from South Carolina.
Ten years from now, it'll just drive itself right up to you.
Yeah, you're right. That may not be too far off, that's scary, but it may not be that far away too.
You guys are in a interesting business.
Another question though, about traffic. Right now, you've got the ability to turn right into the property and left out of it. But if people want to get back onto seven going west, now they go up to Shreve Road and go through that intersection. So how's that gonna work?
I think, I mean, right now, there's an existing curb cut at Gordon Road. They can take a left out of Gordon Road and go west on Route Seven. They can go east on Route Seven as well. Here, we're actually a little bit further off, I think, from the, from the Birch Street, or the Birch Street entrance, I think, than the existing intersection is at Gordon Road. So my hope would be that it would be sort of a somewhat improved condition, I think.
Because that, that'd be a miserable left-hand turn to go west.
Into, into the variable lane in the middle?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's something we can look at too.
I mean, my gosh, during high traffic?
Well, you.
You've got, you've got the stoplight right there.
Right. But I mean, I think we need to look at that too in, in the run-up to the public hearing. We'll get an answer for you on that.
And then is there gonna be any room for any queuing of automobiles going into the center?
Yes, there is. So if you have the site plan, why don't? So this side right here. So the service building is out here, so you have this as drive. So you can queue about five cars here. And then you can also queue in the service drive, you'll have the ability to queue eight cars.
You know, when you first started it, you said you were gonna go through that part of the building.
Right, it's the backside of the building.
It's the backside of the building, right.
The backside of the building, okay.
Right.
But there's a bad lane.
Oh, okay.
And anyone that's, anyone that's queued at the existing dealership showroom knows this is a far better situation as far as, you know, bringing some order to how cars are dropped off. And then you also had to design it for fire access as well around all the corners too, which is something that's not provided.
Right now.
On the property right now.
Because there was a concern about, I know the, our marshal gets concerned about, like, even vehicles on fire and being able to access the vehicles back here, so.
What about stormwater? You're gonna be able to, right now, I'm sure, right now, there's probably nothing.
Yeah, there's actually, so we're decreasing the impervious area on the site by lots. So we're adding a lot of green, it's kind of light, we can't see it that well, but we are adding a lot of vegetation that's not there today. And so we are meeting our decrease in phosphorus onsite by changing the impervious area to pervious. And we'll also likely have to do some detention.
That's what I was gonna ask about, that would be great to.
Yeah, extension, yeah.
Help the city as well as maybe lower your stormwater fee.
Right. Put some, but it has some, has some onsite detention, I think, would be key on these old sites as they redevelop.
Right.
Right now, there's pretty much nothing. And it goes right into the stream and, and, yeah, not good.
Sheet flows off of the property.
The T M V offer of the city is gonna ramp up over time. So the city's gonna be very eager to look for all opportunities to, to help it meet that T M V.
So just clarify, on this, the sidewalk that there's now is narrow, but it is brick and it looks nice. So the goal would be to go to whatever basically our standard is in front of the newer stuff on this side of town. So twenty foot, I think you mentioned eleven point eight clear, same sort of brick and make it look nice.
We are proposing to keep the existing planter. So I know there's like that existing planter there.
With the raised brick, I saw it, I hate those things, but okay.
No, I mean, that's, that's always up for discussion, I guess. But we are proposing to keep just, since it's already there and such, but it is gonna be a brick sidewalk and wider than what's out there today.
And then, I don't know about you guys, but the whole two-hundred, three-hundred feet from an R-zone, I mean, considering what's behind this, I can't imagine it matters at all.
Well, it's, it's the trail, right, that's during.
Trail.
It is the trail.
Yeah, but it's, but behind this, there's still other stuff. You guys don't go all the way back to the trail anyway, so.
There's storage, there's car storage.
Yeah, so I, that doesn't, I mean, this is a, if anything, this is an upgrade from stuff that's there. And quite frankly, that whole area, I mean, it is, it is well-established in its commercial nature, so. And I don't find this as, I don't know what's special about car sales versus storage or whatever else is going on back there, but it doesn't strike me as a negative use for people across.
What do you think they're gonna decide what to do at that corner?
Here?
Yeah.
That's, again, I, well, John can answer that, but, you know, the buyers have, have acquired several of these properties in this area.
I know, they've been buying it up and buying it up, which is great, because the last time we looked at it, there were so many individual owners. It was ridiculous, so all ideas were pulled.
Yeah, we're down to just a couple in addition to us.
Steel, steelwork?
Yeah, just, just a few, but we're, we're very, very close. And, you know, we're looking at lots of different options, but we would love to see a multi-use, several stories with retail. And whatever else makes. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we've looked at it from a big master planning, not getting into the weeds of it, but we think by moving the showroom, it gives you an opportunity, the, the existing showroom gives you an opportunity to do a road realignment, which is really what you need to make that a successful mixed-use project and really activate the area. Because right now, you're still, you know, they're not, it's not quite big enough of a block to really consider it a super block for, for, from a planning perspective. We need to have just a little bit more frontage to make it, make it work. And then you also have the, the issue that, you know, that, that property that they own, some of it is Fairfax County. So it's gonna be very hard unless you have enough critical mass on the Falls Church side to make the, to make, you know, Fairfax County go along with it. And that's kind of the intent. And I think doing this, getting the approval and relocating the showroom is gonna give you enough critical mass on the other side that then you have a real project that, you know, the county and the city would both be proud to be part of.
Yeah, I will say, when you, when I first heard about this, I was like, ah, you know, a new building over there is not making me feel good about redevelopment. But I'm glad to hear that, you know, you have visions of getting started closer to the corner. Plus, I mean, it sounds like you're, you're not ruling out the fact that this building may not be there that long if something better comes along.
But if it doesn't, if something better doesn't come along.
Sure.
It's, it's gonna be built in a quality fashion and can be integrated with other redevelopment.
I mean, honest, you probably know better than I do, but ten, twenty years from now, car sales are gonna be very different. You may have a completely different business model.
Right.
And need totally different space and things like that.
And I want to say, I think Volvo understands that and that's their push, why not making a bigger footprint than they are? Because even this building, as small as it is, it could be adaptable to many, many other uses because we're not creating it to be so car-specific.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's really kind of a box, you know, that's decorated to Volvo's requirements.
It's a box.
But the interior, but the interior is really, you know, fairly simple and flexible. There isn't a lot of, a lot of hard walls in there. I mean, I think it's gonna give them the opportunity to, down the road, if.
Yeah, you're not building like three levels of underground parking and stuff that you have to get fifty years out of for it to make sense, so.
Right.
Although I will say, is it Honda over on Anandale and Fifty that built the parking deck for their cars?
Yeah.
Anthony's. That's your procedural question. You mentioned, the staff report mentioned three items, two variances and a special use permit, but I thought you mentioned four things.
Yeah, we've also requested a, a modification to reduce the number of loading spaces on the property from two to one. Frankly, we feel like, given the fact that your existing new vehicle inventory is over here and your service delivery is over here, it, it doesn't improve the functionality of the building to have two loading spaces. And frankly, it takes a lot of land out of commission. And that is approved by the Planning Commission, not by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
At, at site plan or?
At site plan, which is why I left it out of this report. But you're free to discuss it and we'll include it with the next staff report, but that would be considered.
It's like three. I think the vehicle sales require like two just for the vehicle sales and then one for the office.
One for a four hundred square feet of showroom or whatever it is.
Where would you load? I mean, you'd be able to pull, because right now, as we all know, it's not great when there's a car carrier that just stops in the middle of, of Broad Street and does their load, you know.
So all the loading will continue to occur over here. So really, there's no loading with, with, you know, the car carriers or anything like that on this property at all.
What can we blame for this? Is that you guys, IKEA? I mean, you guys are all one company, but it's.
It's the driver, it's the driver.
Yeah, they should never, ever be on. It's the independent driver.
We all know, we've seen that, and not, not every day, but it, once in a while, you'll see that. Maybe it's an unfamiliar driver, he's confused where to go. We'll blame it on that.
Yeah, we'll blame it on the, on the delivery folks, not us. But, yeah, we, yeah, we have pretty specific instructions for them and where they're supposed to go and be, and to not do it late at night and things like that, so.
And Commissioner Krasner, with your permission, I mean, we'll, we'll take a look at that between now and the planning, or now in the public hearing.
The loading, yeah.
Yeah, just see if we can get an answer.
For me, I would say it's the loading, onsite detention, I'd love to see. And just a general comment, I mean, not that I don't support the idea of the variance, I mean, the BZI will get the final say on that. But I think what it speaks to is the need for us to look at that area because.
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, normally in a commercial setting, you know, asking for variance, you know, a separate setback is kind of difficult to justify under traditional ways of looking at a variance. But in this sense, in this, in this instance, we obviously, we, we don't want as deep of a setback. So if we don't want that, ordinance needs to allow for flexibility or.
Yeah.
Call for that, otherwise, you know, there would be other folks who say, well, I'm not even gonna bother with the variance, I'm just gonna build it where they tell me to, where the ordinance tells me to build it. And if we don't like that, we need to do something about it, so, which everyone in this room knows, but.
My goal was to try to move as many of the requests away from a variance approval as possible.
Right, no, I know that, yeah, no, yeah, I know. But just more, more, more for us.
Right, no, there's a handful of things like that.
Right, we have lots of things where there's a mismatch between what the ordinance calls for and what we would like to see.
Yeah, which is not good.
And in general, I mean, it's in line with like the future land use map and the future zoning.
Right.
And so I think if it was our.
I think the intent is, is to follow, you know, the intent of this building was designed to meet what you're gonna do down the road. We're, we're not designing to present-day circumstance because we, we realize that's not ideal.
However, I'm gonna put this out. I was gonna wait until Mumble it later, but we need to get that small area plan done. This is another case of we don't have it. So we have no way to picture it within the small area plan. And I get so annoyed that we don't have that. We should have had it last year. And I'll just put it out there.
My second.
And so I get upset every time we start talking about it and it's, you know, the.
Well, I mean.
Car before the horse and we're just not, we've not met that need.
We should look at our work plan, right? Because, I mean, it's easy to say now and if we had a time machine, we'd go back and do it, but.
Has it started now, third quarter?
Yeah, so, so this is a homework assignment. Look at the work plan, come back in the next meeting and say what you want to reshuffle, right?
Well, I've said this quite often.
I'm just saying.
It's the loudest I've said.
I agree with you, but I'm just saying, we can't just say it. We gotta, we gotta go look at the work plan and move other things out of the way. Otherwise, you can't magically do, sorry for bringing you into our business, but, you know what I mean? It's like, I think it's, we lament it, but we don't ever figure out, okay, well, then we're gonna not do that, so we can focus on this.
I would've figured, somewhere, staff would've kind of figured that out, too.
All right, so, we'll blame Ms. Ruzi. All right, do we have any other questions?
Not a question, but I'm gonna ask it, are you familiar with the WELL Building Standard by any chance, when you were talking earlier about the inter-
Yes, I am.
That may be something, it's, it's kind of a new thing, it's, it's focused on the interiors and when you were describing-
It is, the, the only thing is that there isn't a real way to codify that, because you're relying on, like, whoever you buy your furniture from, whoever you buy your carpeting from, from them to certify that, and there isn't a consistent certification. The best thing to do that we found as architects is to do Energy Star from an energy and, and lighting and all of that, and then to go with a, you know, sort of a LEED certification, and then a, a, a tree, forestry conserva-, forestry conservation certification, which means you have a, you know where your forest products come from.
Right.
Those are really the, the best way to do it, and when we do just interiors-only projects, that's what we do, because we found that to be the best.
Yeah, and those are certainly all very laudable things. The very first business in Virginia to get the WELL certification is one that's right here in the city, and we're gonna do a little recognition for them a week from tonight.
Well, I, I think, you know, we probably can meet a lot of that with this building, it's just that-
I think you could, too.
Yeah, it's just that there isn't a codified standard, like, when you do LEED, you know, there's a checklist you follow, and as an architect, and when you're a designer, you can follow that, we can follow that very well.
Which, which, which one is it?
It's WELL Certification.
WELL Certification.
No, I mean, which business is it?
The building.
Oh, Marcon.
Do you have a LEED target?
Tax analyst building.
Do you have, does Volvo have a LEED requirement? I mean, or target?
Uh, yes, it's designed, they don't have a specific requirement that we have to meet it, but everything we do, if we, if we were to go out and get it, we would get it, because, you know, all the furniture pieces that they do, all the lighting that they do, all of it meets it.
What level are you think you would be equivalent to?
Uh, it would be a silver level, gold is a little bit tougher to achieve, just because you don't have, you know, you need a green roof, you need a lot of other things that you do, and then LEED has two components, there's the building component and there's the operation component, how you get rid of your trash, how to do all of that, and Volvo can't dictate that as a manufacturer, that's up to the, to the local operator, so that's something that could be done, but it would have to be worked out with the buyer group, not with Volvo direct.
People love LEED.
But it certainly, there isn't anything on, on, with this design on their standards that would keep us from not needing that. I mean, if we just build it according to what the manufacturer recommends and our, you know, our Virginia code, our, our building practices here, we will be at LEED silver without any effort.
Mandate from the corporation's all about the interior, is that?
No, no, it's also exterior, too, it's energy, it, it's the energy consumption, it's, you know, your glass, I mean, there's a recycled content requirement, but most of it is the interior, because that's where the customer experiences it.